Welcome this evening. We're here tonight for a public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're here tonight for a public hearing. PJ Keating...
Can I put it louder?
Put it louder? Test, check. Yes? No? Alright. We have to... Okay. Better now? So PJ Keating, existing quarry, existing asphalt plant on South Main Street. He's proposing to move the asphalt plant from the back of the property to the front of the property. And that actually, that project is already underway. A lot of the components of that have moved to the front of the property to the new location. But part of what they need to complete the project is a land use license and approval by the town and the fire department for... They're gonna move some flammable material, or material classified as being flammable, to the front of the property. And it's three tanks that are storing asphalt. And you'll get more, better explanation about what all that means than I can provide through the course of the presentation tonight. But basically, we're here to share what we know about it for people here from PJ Keating that are gonna answer any questions that you have. We're gonna start with a presentation by the fire chief. We're gonna go to PJ Keating. We'll introduce that table. Let PJ Keating make some comments, and then the rest of the night is yours to ask whatever questions you have. PJ Keating and the chief will answer the questions as best we can. But the goal is to hear what you have. You think about what's proposed, and as part of the approval process. You know, we've got the ability to put conditions on the approval, and we wanna understand what your issues are, what your concerns are as part of approving the license. So let's start, let's introduce the head table. Head table, leave a better name for us. The people up on the stage, call us what you want, but you first.
Kevin Yelob, fire chief.
Roger Cebral, chairman of the board of selectmen.
David DeRouge, selectman.
Kevin Gaskill, board of selectmen.
Jeffrey Blake, town council.
Julie Ebert, town administrator.
And this feels too loud now, is it okay? It feels too loud. You're in the back, it's not here. It's too loud up here. Chief, Keating.
Thank you. One moment, please. How's that? No? Too much?
I can hear you.
That, that's good? That, that's good? Okay, very good. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for attending tonight. This is a very important public hearing in the process that has been defined by state law on how we go about issuing a land use license for the storage of flammable and combustible liquids over 10,000 gallons incapacitating. So just so you know, the state law gives the head of the fire department the authority to permit storage of combustibles under 10,000 gallons. Anything over 10,000 gallons needs the approval of the state fire marshal. There's a permit that PJ Keating is prepared to submit to the fire marshal for that request. The fire marshal will not open that package until the land use license has been issued by the town. So this is a very important step in that process. As I mentioned in this entire process, the land use license hearing and the process by which the land use license is either approved or disapproved is governed by state law. There are certain requirements on the town. One is to have a public hearing. There's also the requirement that we inform you of the public hearing. So 290 letters, certified letters, were mailed out from town halls at the expense of PJ Keating, per the law, to a butter's and a butter's of a butter's to their property at 72 South Main Street. So some folks know that neighbor may have received a letter, a certified letter, but they didn't, and may be asking why. It's because the law says that the town shall send out, paid for by, in this case PJ Keating, letters, certified letters to the butter's and the butter's to the letter's. So my understanding is that if you are heading down South Main Street towards the Fayetteville Line, 30 South Main Street was the last address that had, was either a butter or a flutter to a butter, 30 South Main Street received a letter. 28 South Main Street did not. Okay? The law also requires that we advertise in newspapers. And this ad ran in the Bedford Standard Times and the Neighborhood News. So we met the requirement of two publications. In addition, we went a few steps above and beyond that. In the direction of the board of selectmen, a town-wide reverse 911 call was put out on Sunday night to residents and tenants. We also used the town's social media platforms to get the word out about tonight's meeting. And the town signed, after a resident came into town hall with a suggestion, on Monday it was changed to, I'm sorry, Tuesday, it was changed to accommodate tonight's meeting. So we did our best, we went above what the law, the minimum the law requires to get notification out to the residents. So just wanted to make sure that we understood that. So the issue is the relocation of existing storage tanks. PJ Keating has three tanks totaling 70,000 gallons of liquid asphalt. Each of those tanks exceed the 10,000 gallon threshold, therefore the permit will be issued by the Commonwealth through the fire marshal. The total aggregate, three tanks, 20,000, 20,000, and 30,000. Now, I'm not going to assume that all of us, because I am not, are knowledgeable in how asphalt is made. So I asked the selectmen, and they agreed, to show this less than three-minute video on how asphalt is made at an asphalt plant. Now, I wanna be fair and transparent. This is not PJ Keating's facility, it's not their video, it's not their equipment. In fact, it comes from Kentucky. However, to make sure that this was fair, I shared this video with PJ Keating and asked them to comment if this was a good indicator of how they conduct business at their asphalt plant. And they reported back the affirmative that yes, this is pretty much, maybe the color of the machines is different, but the basic principles from this Kentucky video is what happens here in town. So we're gonna show that video, it's about three minutes long. Hi, I'm Alden Rado from Pat Beach. While driving down a smooth asphalt road, have you ever wondered as to how that asphalt mix is produced? Behind me is an asphalt plant where stone, sand, and recycled products are from the liquid asphalt to make an efficient pavement material. It all starts at the silo plant. Each plant consists of a different aggregate ranging from quartz stone down to finer sand. A loader operator pulls stone from the piles to cold feed bins. Each bin pulls a different size aggregate. A conveyor running below the bins feeds aggregates into the asphalt plant. The plant operator, working in an off-site control room, can adjust how much of each aggregate size is used in the mix. Usually, the aggregate enters a large rotating drum with a gas-powered burner flame off one end. The aggregate is completely dried by burner. Once that happens, liquid asphalt is pumped from the heated storage tank and added to the drum where a rotation mixes it with the aggregates. Replaced asphalt pavement, or wrap, can also be sent to the drum through a separate cold feed bin and conveyor. Using these recycling materials reduces costs and spreads air to the environment. A continuous plant, or drum plant, uses the drum to dry and also mix the liquid biode aggregates together. It is the most non-tile plant used in the United States. A batch plant also uses the drum to dry the aggregates, but then is sent to dry the material to a large batch tower and then to a mixing chamber where liquid biode and aggregates are combined. Once the asphalt is mixed thoroughly and heated, it is sent up to storage silos. Some silos are only designed to hold material for a short period of time. Other silos are heated and can store it for several days. Some plants will use more silos depending upon the number of different mix types needed. Beneath the silos is the loading area. Dump trucks will receive the material and then haul it to the paving site. A waste series usually located on the loading range in order to discharge the correct amount of mix for use in the shoot. Once the truck loaded, the driver gives a signal to transport the asphalt mix to where it's needed for safe, smooth, and economical roadway construction. So I'm showing my age by asking one of the younger guys to look at his age. Yes, do you? So before we go any further, I just wanna make sure that, I hope that video helped just to give you a very preliminary understanding on how asphalt is made. I'm sure it's a much more complicated process than that three-minute video showed. But a couple of points just to clarify. The tanks that you see currently when you ride down South Main Street, you see those sips, large tanks, those aren't the tanks that we're talking about. Those are storage silos. You saw the conveyor, something that already made asphalt into a silo, and the truck drives underneath, loads up, and drives off. That's what those tanks are. The tanks we're here to talk about tonight aren't at the new site yet, up front yet. Correct, or still in the back? So just so you understand, the big yellow tanks, six of them that you see, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about fuel storage tanks, different dimensions, different industry standards, different codes and regulations that they need to conform to will be what the proponent is asking to store liquid asphalt. They're the same tanks that have been used at the plant for the last 12 years? Give or take?
Less than more. Might delineate 2013.
So I'm sure they will explain to you that the new facility on South Main Street side consists of 60% of the old stuff from the back and 40% new liquid. And part of the old stuff are the storage tanks for the liquid asphalt. Part of the new stuff are the new silos. Okay? Just wanna make sure everybody understands that. So this slide we're gonna put up at the end of this presentation as well, just so as a visual indicator of what we are talking about tonight. So the existing tank farm shut down in December, and Keating hopes to have an operational beginning.
Everybody see that? Are we in the way? Can everybody see that okay? Are we in the way? Yes?
Good? Okay. And you can see a relocation. The plant was tucked in the neighborhoods. We're operated for, I can tell you that the gas line that goes out to feed that plant, because it's gas fire, was installed 50 years ago. So the plant has been in operation for decades out in the back. Now it's moving much closer. How much closer? If you look at where the old plant was located, the closest of Butter's property round is 551. The closest residence was 1,450 from the old facility. Here's the new facility. The new facility will be 374 feet from the closest residence. So I would imagine that a vast majority of the folks here live in the neighborhoods around the bay. You know, from your experiences, the concerns, the issues, the problems that you live with as a result of living next to an industrial operation. Now, I will tell you that we, as a town, have learned a lot of lessons in the last six months. And one lesson was that we didn't have good management of the concerns that would come into town hall, come into the health department, come into the fire department, possibly the building department. You know, we each have our own little department, and we're each responding when you call individually. Well, the selectmen, who are the licensing board and who have the authority to issue the land use license, may not know about those concerns. Mr. Daniels is here tonight. Mr. Daniels will come by the station or he'll call to talk about blasting, and we've had many long conversations about that. Because that's my responsibility as the fire chief. The selectmen don't know that Mr. Daniels called, and that's my fault. I apologize to Mr. Daniels for that. But we've learned, and now we think have a better plan to take in concerns that you may have. So let me ask, how many of you here have called PJ Keating to complain of present concern? Okay?
Many times.
Okay. Okay, hold on. Just a second, please. We don't know about that. The selectmen don't know, sir, that you call and leave a voicemail. They don't know that you called.
Yes, because I called.
Okay. Okay. I'll give you the microphone if you want.
Not yet.
That's courtesy of getting through this presentation, because I think you're gonna like where we're going with this. I think you're gonna like what your town is doing to manage complaints. We've come up with a plan. So the plan, the goal of the plan is to systematically collect, identify a point of contact for both the town and Keating, to work towards a solution to the problem that you have. Now, you can dismiss that. Okay? I'm looking at some faces, you're just laughing it off. That's fine. But at 3:00 in the morning, when the tailgate locks and wakes you up, instead of calling 911 to complain, we've set up a, which happens in awful lot, we've set up a process where now you will notify the town through the web portal, and we have it set up if you don't have the internet, don't worry about that. And that system then will then send off an email to whoever the board of selectmen is appointed by that and a representative from Keating. We will then work to within 74, 72 hours to have an answer. Now, will it be a resolution to the problem? We hope so. Will it be information that you may not have? We hope so. But we're committed to it, and Keating has already committed, to identifying an individual, one person, not a voicemail. Not a, not a, they're gonna continue their own process. Let me get to that side of this. Let me get to that side in a second. They're gonna continue their own process, but they buy into, they bought into our process. So when you have those concerns, you have those complaints, when you have those questions, feel free to call any one of the departments, nobody's gonna hang up there. But we'll be able now to streamline that, get that to us, and we'll investigate from there. And we are promising some response well within 72 hours. The system is then, it's gonna be on, so you see, you'll get the notification that your complaint, your concern, your complaint or request was received, the emails go automatically, and we'll be back to you. Maybe some additional information, we'll contact you for that. So within 72 hours of designees, we'll talk, we'll find out what's going on. If we are unable to come to a resolution, for whatever reason, we then bump it up a notch, and we go to the town minister, who then has the authority to contact the appropriate boards and to bring those boards in, be it the board of health, or be it the conservation commission, or the planning board, whatever town and other town entity. Here's the missing piece. We're now looping the board of selectmen every three months. They will receive a quarterly report from their designated, outlining the nature of the complaints, when they were received, and how they were resolved, if at all. Why is that important? Because A, by raising your hand, we didn't know that the folks were calling them directly. B, the land use license allows the conditions. One of the conditions that the board will be advancing, taking that into consideration, and maybe you can give your input to them tonight, is that land use licenses have a one-year expiration period. Okay? We have in our files, the current land use license, it's about this big, it's a small little square. There's no conditions on it. It was issued in 1995, it's a form that somebody typed, granting a land use license to PJ Keating for the storage of 70,000 gallons of liquid asphalt. There's no file, there's no backup, there's no notes, there's no explanation of whether or not they had a public hearing like this. So we've learned from the mistakes of the past. Now, when we issue those quarterly reports every three months, that will also be made public. The selectmen's office, they will mail you the report, it will be posted on the town's website for you to access as well. But here's the problem. One year from the issuance, if the board of selectmen has licensing authority decides to issue a license, one year from then, it expires. They now, as the decision makers, know the complaints and concerns that we've been sending to the town for an entire year, and they can take that into consideration when they move forward in their deliberations next year. Okay? So it's an attempt to kind of throw a lasso around everyone's complaint, make it streamlined, make it responsive by town government, and get that given to the hands of the decision makers so that they can make informed decisions.
Like I said, this doesn't remove whatever PJ Keating comes up with, a voicemail, or a, you know, text, or whatever they wanna do. Feel free to do whatever they want, but they bought into this.
So we're gonna show you the portal. It's not up and running until we hear from the board of selectmen, until we get the green light to green light. You go to the town website, I'm sorry, let me show that, on the town's website, it'll be a tab. You click that, and it'll come to this page. That's trying to read, so we blew it up quick. It's going to ask for your name. You can't be anonymous. They simply can't be anonymous. You know, we get anonymous complaints in the fire station all the time, we're out chasing ghosts. So if you're gonna make a complaint, you want your name, address, city and zip, you pretty much know that. This is open to residents of Fayetteville as well. We get many calls from folks in Fayetteville, and we would welcome them to submit complaints and concerns as well. Email address, the concern or complaint, you have a menu there, it could be something that's not listed there, but this is on the back end of this, this is going to create a data field for us so we can see percentages and where the majority of the complaints coming from. And then you have the description of the complaint. And it could, everybody could hit this and say, 3:00 in the morning, the tailgates and the trucks were dropping, and they're waking us up. Please, send that in. Or it could be on blasting. I'll respond to you. It could be on any of the other issues. So right now, we have this wrapped tag system of collecting data from you. This will hopefully put some guidance on that, so that we can work on it. Also, on the website, and I'm not sure a lot of people know this, but on the town website, there's a tab for boards and committees. If you go there, you will see the soil conservation board. The videos of the meetings are also posted on YouTube, in Google or Christian Soil Board, they look at all the, all the different meetings. When you go to the soil conservation board, we have been posting all of last year, in beginning last week, every seismic report from the two stationary seismographs that the blaster is required, and I hope to have, ones on the east, ones on the west, those are the stationary, those are on PJ Keating's property. Besides, if a complaint comes in, the blaster will set up portable seismographs, they've been to Mr. Daniels' property several times to measure that. We post all that data there for you to take a look at. We also post all the videos. It's required by our Christian blasting permit requirements that every blasting video, they come in on a Tuesday, they're posted on a Tuesday. So the data is there for you to take a look at, and we're sharing that a half then, or posting a year and a half now. And that's what the list of videos would look like. Alright, so here's the, this is what I'm sure a lot of you are concerned about. I'm gonna keep an eye on our colleague, who's the subject matter expert in this area, but I think we've all been getting a lesson on how this whole system works. So there are several state requirements, federal requirements as well, for a facility like PJ Keating to comply with. Now remember, I mentioned a land use license of 1995, it was one sheet, half a sheet of paper, with no conditions, with no requirements by the town. As far as the environmental requirements are concerned, the governing document is called the comprehensive plan agreement. And this was issued to PJ Keating by Commonwealth Massachusetts to the Department of, DEP, Department of Environmental Protection. There's copy over here, I'm sure. Email us if you'd like a copy, we'll get it to you. This document governs as far as the state is concerned. Now, you gotta remember, there's different levels of government. The local level does not create environmental policy and enforce it. That's the job of the state government and the federal government. DEP, DPA. So DEP, your state government, issued this condition on the environmental releases, including dust and all emissions and noise, to PJ Keating in 2010. This is a 10-year-old document. Now, we have our state representative here tonight, and if anyone is concerned that a document that is 10 years old is governing the environmental releases at a quarry with asphalt plant, that's the responsibility of the state government. What's a little more trouble is that DEP only conducts inspections every three to five years, and they haven't been to town in the last at least three years. Again, that's a state function. You can beat the board of selectmen up for that, all you want, and the board of health, swing on it. When you're swinging, you're swinging at the wrong knee. There is a responsibility of state government in this, and if y'all okay that they haven't come to the quarry to do an environmental review, to see if conditions that they put on the plant 10 years ago are being met, then let your state folks know.
How do we do that?
Stay right here.
Chief?
Your state representative, Chris Hendrix, is sitting right here.
Chief?
Your state representative, Chris Hendrix, is sitting right here. I'm sorry, being focused, speed it up a little bit. Can we just finish this town again? We are coming to the end here. So, as I said, there was no local link to this document. None whatsoever. The existing land use license has no attachments. It is now being attached to the soil permit that the soil removal board permit issued to PJ Keating signed. So not only do they have this document in their file, but now the permit they get from the town combined is going to remind them of those environmental conditions are. It's also going to be attached to the land use license. And it's also going to be attached to the permit that's issued by the fire.
This is all in, though?
This is all in, yeah.
It sounds like you're saying it's already attached.
Well, we have to tell you what the plan is in the event that it goes after, right? So, we're ready in the event that this happens. That a document that has been kind of in the file and quite obviously not being executed by the state at a level I think we would all want, is going to be at three different levels in your town government, all controlled by the board of selectmen. Okay, so we gave up some responsibility while we're recapturing that authority, man. So it's in the soil permit. So here's the last piece, and then I'm done. There is a very important vote coming up at town meetings. The health board, Chairman Bob Diaries is here, is requesting in their budget a part-time health agent who will be the agent of the soil conservation committee board. That person, when hired,
If hired.
If hired, thank you. Will have a document that includes all of the environmental standards. Will have checklists. Will be trained on what to look for. Will be on boots on the ground, which is something that has never happened before. We've got one health agent in town who's pulled a thousand different directions. We're now coming to a town meeting in the spring through the board of health's budget, requests funding. And if I'm correct, it's only half the funding for that position. Because the other half is being paid for by PJ Keating. Through the permit that they paid for, they paid the town. So they paid sixteen thousand dollars for the permit to remove rock from the quarry. That is the first sixteen thousand dollars that will be used to pay the part-time meeting. To represent all of us inside the plant, making sure that the environmental concerns are being addressed. And receiving the complaints that are received by all the different towns. So with that, I turn it over to the chairman. We're gonna leave this up here for reference. And thank you for your attention and your comments.
Thank you, chairman. We've got a question. PJ Keating, do a presentation first, and then I'll open up the questions to the audience. So for PJ Keating, we've got plenty of time to say everything you want. Let PJ Keating come out and make a presentation as well. Plenty of time for open discussion, so we're not gonna quit.
Good evening, I'll be quick. My name is Ted Pickering. I'm the senior project manager of Apex Companies, an environmental consulting firm. And I've been working with PJ Keating for some fifteen years now. Currently assisting them obtaining their state permits. And that's with the Department of Fire Services, which most of you probably know as a state farm marshal. What we're doing here today is we're gonna be moving those two twelve-thousand gallon vertical tanks containing liquid asphalt and one thirty-thousand gallon vertical tank from the east end of the property to the west end.
Thank you.
That's the application, that's what I'm assisting. We were here once before in two thousand and thirteen when they installed the thirty-thousand gallon tank. And at that point, we did that under the nineteen ninety-five license that has been discussed. I have minutes from the nineteen ninety-five meeting. We should send Chief Gallagher to file this. It's empty, I can provide that to you. What they were basically trying to do in nineteen ninety-five was to combine all the permits going back to nineteen forty-seven, nineteen fifty-four, nineteen sixty-three, and then they had one in nineteen thirty and nineteen eighty-six. There's a long history of PJ Keating working with the town to try to get things right. So the permit application to the Department of Fire Services is a simple two-page form. On that form, it requires two town signatures. One from the board of selectmen as the licensing authority and the other from the fire chief. Appendant to that two-page application for each tank is about a two-inch document with technical information about the foundations, the secondary containment system, the can of drawings for the tanks, safety data sheets for the asphalt that we contain, and other information. So I have technical expertise in having prepared that permit application package and on the governing regulations. So here we are today, nineteen ninety-five, we're in the nineteen ninety-five license. The selectmen have determined that because of this move, that license should be amended. And that's what my understanding of this meeting is all about. That's all I have. Let me just add, I'm sorry. There are no changes requested to the license volumes and the quantities, the substances, and they're all the same.
Thank you. Alright, so we are, we just want to lay out the rules for this first. So plenty of time, we've got the rest of the night. So what I'd ask is you go to the microphone, you identify yourself with your name, your address. If we could line it up maybe three deep, no more than that. So we've got a sense of how many people want to speak. Like to, you know, be respectful of the people behind you, limit your comments to, you know, a couple of minutes. You're first, and you're gonna be first. You're first. Yeah, we are recording, so.
My name is Kevin Smith. I live at one sixty-one Los Angeles, I have a quarry property. I'm also the head of the David, uh, PJ Keating group. Everything we just heard here was supposed to have been put in a dust mitigation plan. It was supposed to be provided, filed with the mine site. There was supposed to be the hotline that went down. There's supposed to be reporting on a monthly basis of all the walls going to that hotline to the board of health, whoever necessary, the soil board or whatever. Now again, none of this is happening. Also, it was not appropriated the last town meeting before this position hired. And nothing has been done yet. Now we've had the mass exodus of PJ Keating personnel that we've just introduced to these people that are running now. So everything's changing again. What have we spent the last six months doing? We were lining all this up, now it's all gonna change. The best idea I heard from Kevin was the town is gonna monitor all these calls now and all this action so that we don't have to worry. The hotline went down for over a month. We didn't know who to talk to, we call up, people call up, oh, they're all gone. The only person that was up was Jeff. And what we found shortly after that was Jeff was on my own front because he, he could just notice he had found employment elsewhere. We can't keep doing this. If they filed this other mitigation plan, and what they're gonna do with the employees around our homes, follow through with it or don't get into the permit. Turn it into a residential.
I can now help comment, I invite the health agent, it's lovely comment. I mean, there's been a lot of work done that maybe is not visible. I mean, their soil removal permit is much more robust than it's ever been before. We engaged consultants to help us insert language in that soil removal permit to incorporate all of the laws that they need, to specific references to all of the laws they need to comply with. We engaged our retirement consultants, Warden Kern, to help us design a monitoring plan for our agents so we not get hired an agent. But we've got the document that that agent is going to use when they are engaged. We've had regular conversations with, through the soil board, with PJ Keating, sharing our annoying concerns about. We met at the DEP offices with representatives of the town and PJ Keating, expressed our concerns over the movement of this plant to the front of the property, expressed ongoing residents' concerns about issues in the neighborhood. So I, you know, at every one of those meetings, I think PJ Keating is aware of the concerns of the residents and the town. So I won't say it's accurate to say nothing's happened. I think, you know, PJ Keating is aware of the fact that the game has changed. I think they're aware of the fact that none of us are happy with the fact that they moved the asphalt plant to the front of the property rather than the back of the property, which I think is where it should go. So you go to the microphone, please. So there are things, there are things happening, and we're all here again tonight for our discussion. So just, please, name and address.
My name is Captain Sam Jones, forty-one Marquinhale. So just to be clear, they're moving them already because they are, that's under their permit, is that true?
I'm having trouble with the acoustics on the microphone. Maybe stand up, or stand longer, one more time.
They're already in the process of doing this move?
Yes.
Because it's under their existing permit, is that true?
But not the tanks, so?
But they can't do, they can't complete the move of the tanks without you all signing off on the land use permit. What behooves you to sign that? Why would you want to sign that?
That's a fair question. Yeah, so our understanding as a board of selectmen, as a town, when the property was zoned from residential to industrial, we probably at that point should have put in some site plan review so some authority to approve what they were going to do, and we didn't do that. When I say we, we made, I mean, the collective, we, town meeting, and the planning board, and all of us together. We didn't do that. So they're doing what they've got a right to do.
But they can't complete what they want to do without this land use permit.
Correct, yeah. So now, all of a sudden, we've got, apparently, we've got some authority over what they're trying to do.
Okay, great, so let's use it. Why would you want to do that? I understand why they want to, they want to move that up so they can dig some more, I get that, their business. I understand why they want, why do we want? My parents bought that house in the seventies. So you say we bought it, the quarry was existing. The quarry is not what it was. What we give it out there. That thing that they're moving up, it is that thing, right, Chris?
Yeah.
So like, you can see it, it looks like a UFO landing, it's fused. You can't take a deep breath, it smells like chemical, it's horrible. And you want to move that right on South Main Street.
Uh-uh, I don't want to move it.
Well, if you sign this, then you're agreeing with this. Why do we just say no? We're not signing it.
I, there are things we can do, there are things we can't do. And we're working to understand what we can do and what we can't do. We invited our town council, which is called the Mucage, to be here to help us understand, to hear you, and to help us understand what authority we have.
I just don't know why they want to do this. What, how is this gonna benefit the town?
It doesn't benefit the town in any way.
So let's not do it, period. PJ Keating, they may have learned, but they cannot do this. We don't want it. And that's how we don't want it. Why would we do this?
I've made it clear at every, at every meeting we've had with PJ Keating that my preference would be to see them move that plant to the back of the property and then chose not to.
Nobody wants this except for PJ Keating. And I understand why they want it. But we don't, and we have the ability to stop it. Do not sign it. They can't do it. End of discussion. They can keep doing what they're doing if they're all, if they want out of here to do their blasting. And it's over. Well, what? They've been here a long time, they've gotten away with a ton in a residential area. We live here, do any of you live in this area?
No, I don't.
It's horrible, if you literally go out, you can hear it. It's like you're living in a disaster.
Chairman Paul, fifty-eight South Main Street. So I have been attending the board of health meetings, the different public forums that we've had discussions regarding PJ Keating since the first meeting we had with the council. What I am incredibly frustrated with right now is that I think that first meeting was about, oh, two years ago, sorry?
Two years ago, yeah.
And when I drive down or run, because I'm a runner, I get gray in my eyes. There's so much silk and dust coming off of that property right now. And you're telling me that you all, that are the people that are supposed to be representing us, had no idea? That is baffling to me. So you are, you're saying that we didn't know anything, and you have not heard those complaints. How is that even possible? If you...
May I?
Yes. No, don't worry.
Finish the...
So that's the first thing, the first frustration. Secondly, I'm with Kevin, I sit on that group, whatever you would call us, where we have attempted to work collaboratively with the town and PJ Keating to try to get things resolved. Because I'm somebody who, I'm not gonna pretend to think that they're gonna close down. I don't think that's gonna happen, they were visiting. But that being said, they need to be a respectful business of our community. I, like I said, I can't go outside my door now, it stinks. Whatever is happening, whether it's moving of the pieces, I don't know, but the smell's horrendous. The noise, at five thirty AM when I'm going out the door of the plant, and the noise unacceptable. And the dust. Like, I just don't know. I saw on the news that they investigated PJ Keating in North Island because the dust is so bad. Why are we not doing that here? Like, why are you not demanding that that happen here? Because that's why, I'm not kidding when I tell you that I have to, like, put eye locks on my eye because the gray is so bad when I run around the property. There's been times that I've called them to ask them to clean the sand because I'm running on a beach. When is enough enough? I mean, I don't, you know, again, I tried to work with them, we tried to work with them. We tried to be the voice of the community, that didn't seem to pan out very well. I'm asking you all to be my voice, this is fine. I don't know what else to do.
I'm Mary LeBeau, by Willow Street in Kuschna. I've been there many years. I grew up in Kuschna, in the same, same area. So I've lived in the quarry all my life. It has gotten too big, the town, it got too big as far as I'm concerned, someone did. I grew up over there, it was not like that years ago when I was a kid. And this is like fifty, sixty years ago. And now, it is out of hand, as she said, the dust is horrendous. The odor is terrible, and the noise. When they move it closer to South Main Street, now all these houses that are right there are going to get more of that. And it's just going on and on. And now we have that street sweeper that goes by and does nothing. It's not about that. It's important to be an answer because people try to pass it. And you can't, most of the time you can't. But he deserves it, he was hired. But they're wasting their money, they owe it for something else with that money that they have. And I have a question directed to Mr. Gallagher. At one of your recent meetings, you said that the reason they wanted to move it was to increase the quarry portion of the property. Could you just explain a little bit further as to what that meant?
As it was explained to me as it was explained to me by representatives of PJ Keating, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to answer your questions as well. The land underneath the previous, something existing, it's called the existing asphalt plant, as well. And part of their mining operation, and their mining plan for the next X number of decades, is to move in that direction. So it was explained to the town that it is part of their migration plan to move in the direction where the asphalt plant currently sits. Did that answer your question? And if Keating wants to, if I said it wrong, please...
Yes, sir. Good evening, Douglas Thomas, twenty-five South Main Street. Here we sit and talk about what PJ Keating would like to, or what they're going to. If one of the residents wants PJ Keating to do it. We want PJ Keating out of the neighborhood. It's a lot of lies. My view, as I sit here and listen to what I think is not right, is this is the quality of life. And this is something that we don't hear from you guys. This place is releasing carcinogens, cancer-causing agents. This place is releasing carcinogens, cancer-causing agents, sleep deprivation, you name it. The woman says she goes jogging in the morning, she has something in her eyes that's silt, that is something that we're breathing in, we're eating, we're outside grilling, stay on the grill, we're consuming that. Those are shards, which are very bad for us. This is all hidden information. I'm the guy that's still upright and am voicing my opinion about the quality of our health, our children, grandchildren, and ourselves. I am tired of listening to the trucks 24/7 with the dust, the dirt, the noise, the beeping of the trucks backing up the plants on line, the tailgate fanning, et cetera. This needs to be looked at and done about the quality of what this place is doing to our community. It's embarrassing, the literature that I read about PJ Keating. They have to get a study done since 1999 on air quality or any of that. Why? Because it's a blind eye? I think everyone's tired of it, but a blind eye, we want action. And that's where I see a headache, the quality of life.
You're cutting a line, you know that. He doesn't know that, right? I go ahead.
My name is Alago, I live in Old City, City of Las Vegas. And as far as somebody getting notified, something's going on with the quarry, nobody says something, any letters, or anything like that. And the other thing, today before I knew this meeting was coming up, I took a walk up the street, and I walked past a few people's houses. Nothing had changed. I looked at my garage door, my garage door was white, the bottom of it is gray to green. Now, I haven't watched it this winter, but I can repower watch that, right? And the other thing is, I got a sensor in the backyard belonging to you guys. And I see a guy coming down the yard, I don't know if we kind of been there, but they're always fixing it. And it's walking around with antennas on it, so I don't know if the thing works. I'd like to see, say, a ground, some kind, that showed me that this thing isn't working. And before this meeting tonight, I think it was yesterday, the sweeper came down and swept our street for the first time, uh, since before, maybe even home, I don't know, but...
Yesterday?
That's right, because the meeting was tonight they swept the street. First time in six months, this happens every time through meetings. But the guy came by and just swept the street, and it looked pretty good. But my main concern is the dust. Now, we were told quite a while ago, and my old friend might have told me, that they were beginning a truck, it was going to shoot water high so it could take hold down the dust on the upper part of the hills, or the burn, whatever you want to call it, right? Now, I worked in asphalt for quite a while, and the other thing I'm seriously asking a question about, how hot is that asphalt mix in coming out of that tank? And is that tank heated? Is the tank heated?
Yes.
You look away from the handle, how many people are in that tank?
How many what? How hot is the asphalt coming out of the tank, I think is the question.
It's less, less than 300 degrees.
Is there a wall around that tank? Is it a reverberant wall, so if anything goes wrong? Is it a reverberant wall to hold the asphalt that overflows out of the tank in there?
Yes, there is, that's part of the requirement for the purpose, it's secondary containment.
Oh, okay.
So Mr. Baker, can I take that one?
Just to add to that, the gentleman from PJ Keating is correct. There is a containment area, cement containment area around the site where the tanks would be installed. It is designed by the code to be able to capture one and a half times the contents of the tank.
Got it.
Plus six inches of water for it. So in the event of a rupture, it's designed so that containment facility can capture. Question about liquid asphalt, how hot, the chemical properties and things of that, so in front of, on the table here are the MSDS sheets that I've provided on three different types of asphalt that they will be, that they're requesting to store, that they currently store in the back. My understanding, it's kind of like gasoline, high-grade, medium-grade, low-grade. So if you would have looked, there are three different identifying numbers, but the MSDS is the same on all. Now, as far as firefighting is concerned, the MSDS tells us that the best way to put out a fire is with dry chemicals, which we don't have, foam, which we don't have, and water, which we do have. So part of the recommendations to the licensing authority, Board of Selectmen, is a fire suppression plan that I've been working on that would require PJ Keating to purchase four 125-pound wheel extinguishers of an agent called Purple K, which is the high-end dry chemical extinguisher. Those would be positioned on the four corners of the containment facility. So if there was a rupture and it leaked out and it ignited, they would have that initial capability of putting out the fire. It requires that it staff be trained. It also asks, well, no, because it tells PJ Keating that they have to provide the town a foam trailer, a trailer similar to what is in the city of New Bedford for their industrial facilities, that would have the necessary foam concentrate, the hoses, the inlets for the water, big master screen, so that we would then be prepared, a lot more than we are now, to address a fire at the, at the facility, if it were to go. So we're, we're being proactive now. Be upset that I didn't ask for this 17 years ago, that came by. We've been operating without good foam capabilities. We have it, but not in the quantities that we would need if the existing plant. And I'm telling you, out of sight, out of mind. That plant was stuck out in the back of the woods, it operated, we've never been called there for an emergency. So we didn't require those kind of levels of firefighting capabilities that we are now. And the reason is, 374 feet versus 14 feet. So we've, we've got these plans, it'll be incorporated in, if this moves forward, the other steps of the process, but we've thought about this and we've planned it out. Thank you.
Okay, the three ladies, three ladies, all you there three ladies stepped up to the microphone, so I'd like to give them the opportunity as well. Behind, folks behind you waving questions, so. Yeah, they weren't there when they stepped up. Thank you.
So my name is Laura Perry, and I'm from 36 Dalton Street in Acushnet. So what you just said about the PJ Keating has to have the foam and all this stuff, who's going to verify that someone is trained in that? So all that's going to be checked, it's not just going to be, you have to do this, then nobody's going to check it? So the other thing, um...
Well, again, the issue is, who's checking on the training? I'm not sure that's something that needs to be done 24 hours a day. Checking on the training, but can I say, when I point it this way, that the fire department will be responsible for making sure that all fire protection, fire suppression equipment, as we have with restaurants, as we have with the schools, as we have with other facilities we have, are inspected, are certified, are fully compliant.
Okay, I can come up here to that, but because you just brought it up, I might ask the question. The other thing is, I'm not for being moved, because at the location that it's at currently, I mean, it's the dirt in the window sills, it's the smell, the odor is horrendous, it's a chchchchchchchchchch, when, when they're moving, whatever they're moving up in that, whatever their, their process is. My point is, is that it was said to maybe give them one year the permit, and then we'll review it. Well, not to be put down in a business, but we know what Tony's service station looks like, and every year their license gets renewed. And that place is the dump, and again, we live on that side of town. I think we should have to put off that. If you go down the other side of town, you're not seeing a piece of property, it looks as crappy as that, but every year the license gets renewed. So would the same thing happen with this if, if, which I don't want, they were giving them one year of permit use? It, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense because, oh, well, we know what Tony is. Seriously? I mean, how many cars does the allowed vehicles is allowed to have on that property? And I know this is about PJ Keating, but that's an example of something that doesn't get taken care of. So it would be the same thing when we're here with PJ Keating. That's my opinion.
Melissa Perry, 47, Wayne Lane, so we're on the back end. I'm going to start with the blasting. We have cracks down our hallway. Our deck, our upper deck needs to be moved, every single year needs to be realigned because it slides off the, the base. Our windows, condensation inside, it's horrible. Also, our neighborhood, there's about 20 kids in our neighborhood that are outside playing all day long, and now I'm concerned with the air quality with all of this. It, it's just not, it's not going to be good. Twenty years down the road, what's going to happen? Are they going to have cancer, are they going to have liver, liver damage, respiratory problems, this, that, and the other? We can walk to the quarry from our house every day from work, they're going to come in, I got to fix every picture in my house because it's, it's been changing. So this is my concern, basically, the children and their future of health, they're outside, they're playing, they're running around, something needs to be done, they can't be able.
And here's Chico, through Jordan Street. My question is, you know, all these, we have all these complaints, but what can we as a community do to stop you from voting yes on moving those stacks? I sit out on my deck in the summer with a cup of coffee, and it's night evening, and you can see the smoke rising from those stacks. What's going to happen when you put that on South Main Street? What's going to happen to our neighborhood when you put those stacks on South Main Street? Is that enough to move it back? And I'm going to bring it right to the front? What can we do? None of us want that. Nobody in this room wants you to move those stacks. So how are we going to stop that?
Get back my back yard.
Move my back yard.
Move my back yard.
What can we do, what can we do as a community to convince you people to not vote on that kind of...
Mrs. Chen, can I kind of make a comment? I know we're trying to let the audience make a comment, but I don't think that you have to do anything for me to begin to convince not to move those tanks. I have not had my last experience. I have not had an opportunity to speak to the board or review the measures that they're trying to put in place. However, I know a hot button issue, because I know a lot of you folks that live on that side of town, and I grew up in the town of Acushnet, I've resided in the town of Acushnet my whole entire life, and my friends lived in that neighborhood. I have documentation where PJ Keating is being cited for the morality, cancer facility, the DEM, it's not too good, they do a lot of violations there, they talk about putting water in there, dust, to no avail, doesn't work. I spear it, this town, well, you could probably get me a lot, not me talking about it, no? So I spear our town bylaws that are in place inside this red book. I'm actually appalled that there's never been anything done above dust landing on all your residents' homes. So I'm going to show you of this. Whatever my two colleagues decide to do, I am an independent man, I vote for what I believe is the right thing for the community as a whole, I've always been that guy. I can assure you that nobody from PJ Keating is going to make me vote otherwise. I don't think there's a resident in this room that wants to see this go through. I think that we, the Board of Selectmen, have some concerns that we're never going to shut down PJ Keating, so we have to do our best to figure out what the ultimate plan is going to be moving forward to lessen the impact on all you folks. And I can tell you this right now, it's all, it's all been right here for a number of years, and I'll wait for my opportunity to speak again, I just want to chime in so all you people in the room don't think that I'm standing there like a stopstone, dummy, and I'm not doing my work. But I can tell you this right now, in this pile of crap bylaw, you hit in front of the Board of Selectmen four or five years ago, there was only one man that was smart enough to recognize that this was going to be a problem, and he's speaking to you right now.
Can I have on record how the other selectmen feel about moving the stacks? On record?
Yeah, just...
Know how he feels, but I just want to know, how, well, how are we going to vote? Because we need to know, as a community, if you're going to vote to move the stacks or not.
Can you represent this?
And you represent us in this room, so I appreciate you going on record.
Well, as the newest member of the Board of Selectmen, I've come here tonight to hear the, the situation as residents see it. We talked about moving the stacks, well, previous administrations admitted that the quarry or PJ Keating was able to already move the stacks. If you drive down Main Street, you see that they're already...
Are you going to stop it? Are you not going to stop it?
Well, this is what comes out.
Those are the holding tanks, those are not where they're making it.
Excuse me?
Those are the holding tanks that are up on Main Street now, they're not the holds, they're not the tanks that they're going to make it out of, they're way a thousand feet in the back. The closest house is a thousand feet from there, now you're going to put it 300 feet from everybody? Not right.
They also, the tanks that are like moved to the front of the property, they were grabbed and all.
They're not, they're the holding tanks.
Excuse me, all right, to the microphone, please, if you want to address. Thank you, thank you, sorry, thank you. So Mr. Narosha was up, will you finish with your comments?
No, I'm not, I'm not finished with my comments, but if I may continue.
Yeah, go, go, please.
Thank you. The issue here tonight, or before the Board of Selectmen, when we just said, is the holding tanks, the land use licenses. The tanks already exist close to the street, there was no way for the Board of Selectmen to stop that. The quarry is able, because the quarry was rezoned a number of years back, they can move the pieces around the quarry, they, as long as they're within the quarry limits and the bylaws, as I understand it. The issue is, is the land use licenses concerning the storage of the liquid asphalt. And that's what we're here tonight to talk about and to make decisions coming from this.
Answer the question. Are you going to vote that? Are you going to move the whole plant down? What, what, how are you going to move that on South Main Street?
Well, I need to get more information concerning this. That's correct, that's my idea tonight, I just hope the people can take your comments and concerns. I think it's unrealistic to think that the Board of Selectmen is going to shut down the quarry. I think, right, speaking honestly, I hear concerns tonight about the dust and the noise and that sort of thing, and our issuing of the land use licenses is going to have no impact on that as far as the quarry operation goes. We're here tonight to talk about the asphalt operation. They moved the plant forward, which I don't agree with, because it was out in the back when nobody, when it was less of a concern for citizens. Well, I mean, it was less of a concern, all right. So they moved it up front, and it's there. So the question to the select board is, are we going to issue a license to let them operate the asphalt plant? And that's what I'm here to listen and make a decision upon. I understand, they have not impacted, like...
No, I want a day to impact.
All right, I have two things. So first, I wanna answer the question, so I want the opportunity, but just back, certainly back. So the planning board changed the zoning on that property from residential to industrial, and that happened within the last 10 years. Two of us went on on the board, that happened in 2016. The rezoning in 2016, two of us went on on the board when that happened. So we had no way to have, we had no input into that decision. So as a prior board, Mr. Gasco was the only one on the Board of Selectmen at that time. He said he was opposed to it. So, you know, with regard to, you know, do I endorse the concept? I've said from the first meeting with PJ Keating that I did not put this asphalt plant up at the street. I thought they were just creating problems for the neighbors, for the community, for themselves by moving that asphalt plant in the street. And I asked again and again, why can't you move the plant to the back of the property? If it's gonna go anywhere, can you move it to the back of the property? Very honestly, I never got a good answer as to why that was impossible. And I asked again and again. The only answer I got as well, that takes more gas to drive to the back of the property than from the property, and that's the answer I got. So, but we've been led to believe, we've been led to believe that because the property is owned industrial, and we don't have site review, we have no authority over what they're trying to do. That it's industrial zone, provided it meets whatever setback requirements, whatever the industrial zone is, we can't block that. But all of a sudden, they've gotta come to us for a license to move the fuel to the front of the property, and it's, okay, well, maybe I've got some authority over this. And, you know, my first reaction, very honestly, is why would I ever vote in favor of that? Because I don't, I don't think the asphalt plant belongs on South Main Street. I'll be very honest to you and PJ Keating. I don't really have a lot, it's my honest opinion. Why are we moving the asphalt plant to the front of the property? It makes absolutely no sense. It shows complete disregard for the town of Acushnet and the neighbors that live around the plant, who you've abused for the last 100 years. And, you know, now you're asking me to approve the license. And, you know, I might have to say yes, but if I have to. And I, so with that, with that, let's go to Town Counsel. Jeff Layton is with our law firm, Coleman and Page, who's here to tell us what we can do and what we cannot do as a Board of Selectmen, so you all can understand the position we're in here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Chairman said, my name is Jeffrey Boyer from K P Law. And I have to say, I sit through, not a lot of these, but I've sat through a number of them, be it a, an incremental liquid storage tank license, a particularly contentious Class II license, or a special permit for soil, that seems to be the common thing nowadays. And I see rooms full of people that have some serious concerns. And I certainly understand your concerns. But when we talk about an incremental liquid storage tank license, we are not able to simply look at every issue that we have with this property. Now, we do have a Soil Board, and there's a permit that needs to be issued under that particular provision. So there is the ability likely to permit and condition a permit to talk about dust, noise, and the like. But for this, for this particular permit, and I'm just gonna read to you, and I hate to be a lawyer, but I think it's said vested, the Board of Selectmen has the discretion to deny or approve an application for a storage tank. The granting of a license under 148 Section 13 is a discretionary action by the Board, and a court would review the Board's decision using an arbitrary and comprehensive standard. Arbitrary comprehensive simply means, was there a rational basis for taking the action that we talk? Courts have helped, and factors such as public interest, welfare, noise, traffic, and adjacent residential areas may form the basis of a Board's decision to deny or approve with condition an application. Additional factors the Board may wish to consider in this particular context of the storage tank for explosive or impregnable is fire and explosion hazards. Ultimately, the Board will need to articulate a rational basis for its decision to either grant or deny a license. On that note, I certainly have heard everybody that's talked about the noise from trucks banging and blasting and the like. But I would like to hear from PJ Keating to let them give us a better understanding of, how are these tanks, first of all, how tall are these tanks? They said they're 20, 20,000 gallon tanks and a 30,000 gallon tanks. How high above the ground do these they got? Number one, how are they filled? How often are they filled? Are there trucks that fill them? And if you're going, if you're going far, and I'm gonna get up, and if you guys can't hear me, let me know. I believe the old tank farm's somewhere back in here.
Further back.
Further back, all right. You're now, I believe, proposing to put the tank farm here.
They are there.
Okay, I've heard nothing from PJ Keating that tells us how those get filled. I presume that a truck comes down here with this liquid, comes here, fills it up, and then drives out. How many a day ago? Because there's gonna be a significant, or there's gonna be a significant difference between running a truck all the way down here versus here, especially if you have 30 trucks that need to be backed up, right? 30 trucks can back up here, and nobody on our streets wrecked our factory. You back 30 trucks up here, and we've got additions. So I'm wondering if PJ Keating can get up and explain to us, and maybe come up here and actually give us their plan and tell us some of the, some of the, some of the questions that I have. Because as I pointed out, the town can look at public interest, welfare, noise, traffic, and adjacent residential areas. But we certainly know where the adjacent residential areas are. But I think we should be able to explore through a presentation by PJ Keating what the additional noise and traffic will be for this move. And that will be directly related to the tanks themselves, rather than the entire project, which may or may not be the subject of a different term.
I know PJ, does PJ Keating wanna respond? Why don't we go with the lady in the microphone first and invite PJ Keating back up? So, I introduce you, someone for this.
Yes, my name is Diane Abrams. I live on Pembroke Avenue. I lived there my entire life when Waterworld's own quarry, which was a much better company, they came to them when things fell off the wall and the windows got cracked. I was an elderly lady who lives near me, who called me up the street, and she told me that her clock had fallen off the wall, and she called the company, and they said, hey, buddy, don't you have a home on the street, or just call them? So is that the kind of response you get from a reliable company that's supposed to be there to help the community? Now you move tanks that are a thousand feet back to 300 feet, closest to people's property, and you can't tell me, I work in the medical field, I see people panic all the time. All these fuels that are coming out of these tanks, I'm sure have particulate material in them. I'm sure if any of you was next to the quarry, you wouldn't want it there either. I know they're a big company, I know they have a lot of money, they're willing to pay hard someone's salary. So that itself tells you where things are going. I understand, I played in the area of the quarry my whole life. The hole is so deep now, we can't even see the bottom. Which I understand that they're to make money. They want to, so they can blast fire out from the quarry. I understand it is a loose stone out there, that's the problem. Now, I understand that they wanna make money, but what happens if the plant embarrons what I do? Why is it gonna have so much problems there that they're gonna shut them down? I just think the people in Acushnet deserve more than this. My uncle was a water salesman in Acushnet many years ago, and I know if he were alive today, he would never allow this to happen to his community. And I would hope you people stick up for your community. We vote you in, we can vote you out. Please, think of us. That's all I have to say.
Yes, sir, your turn.
Thank you. Gilbert Barnes, 66, Aurora Keane Avenue, Acushnet, where perhaps a course is to the existing plant before you moved. Couple of years ago, we started these meetings, we left each one doubtful, but with a ray of hope, things were put in place that we never followed through on. I gave these plans to you, T. I don't believe any of it. Saying that, nobody else knows, this man doesn't know what the other is, come on, you guys all work in the same building, same departments, to share information. For two years, when they were supposed to make the improvement, nothing's been done. The street sweeper does not come to the end of the road. Okay, unless I go out and physically stop him and make him do our street. We haven't seen him for six months. Two days before the meeting, he comes and does our street, it's a mess. That street sweeper is antiquated, it doesn't have enough water, and he doesn't empty it often enough. Every buck he dumps, I'll back to the street, which need washes down to our property. In the beginning meetings, I said I was offered to move to the front. And before you all get angry, because where the closest property? Lysia and I have had nothing but health issues the last 12 years. Ever since you increased motion, our breathing problems have worsened. We both now rely on C-Caps, inhalers. I just watched a funeral of one man like that, Mr. Keating operators. Okay, because we're being held prisoners in our houses. We can't enjoy the properties that we own and pay taxes on and we live at. Keating, you're terrible. You're keeping all these pretty people walking door to your window stall instead of enjoying a spring morning. You're keeping us from going out in our yards with our grandchildren and playing in the pool. You're beating oil settlement from the smoke that dissipates comes back out of the ground all over our pools in the morning. Now, to pretend that I've seen it, I've had multiple people, Soil Committee, by, come down to a Smith House. That is really scientific. Okay, and I'm saying that in a video for everybody to see. It is one of our town members who's supposed to help us. I think it's time to start putting all these property owners, their children and grandchildren, before they're promised. And as far as not being able to stop them, what happened in the town of Reston when you wanted these plants? Before you move the big towers for Acushnet, Reston told you no. All right, it's time to take no. And it's not just that safety plan, it's the entire operation. When they came down, they sent the roof down and blasted, and my chimney pieces falling all over my roof. He looked at it and said, oh, yeah, that is kind of left. So me depending on the damages, you're causing blasting all the time. In August, the second week of August, it did a blast so big that either the mats weren't in place or prematurely went off, because it put a dust cloud over the entire South Main Street neighborhood. Anybody else see that?
Absolutely.
I'm not crazy. You couldn't see 50 feet in front of me. It just lingered and came through anyway, there was no wind that they stayed for a while.
When, how long ago was this, what was this?
Middle of August.
This year?
This year. They assured us, I had a site inspection meeting in my yard, I volunteered first. They came down, air kindly blasted and put it there, yet I never got any results. Now you sit here and tell me, T, that the results been available a year and a half. Why do I have to go looking for them, googling? I voluntarily had the site inspection company come to our yard and put that there, that'd be blessed. I should've been the first one to know, probably, by the way. And they're telling me it pays exactly 1,000 feet from my houses where they're blessed. Okay, you wanna keep moving it into the neighborhood? When you changed it to an industrial zone, I remember distinctly, because I was on vacation, pretty good, they're doing this on the week of 4th of July. The two busiest vacation weeks, when nobody in town would be home to attend meetings, started for becoming industrial zone instead of industrial. Was one of the busiest vacation weeks in the world, the first two weeks of July. That was put there for a reason. The music was loud as fuck.
The industrial zone was voted, and it says right here, and I got a copy of this from Mr. Levani, it says, "As approved at Town Meeting 11/4/2016." Sir, I wanted to make sure I had a record of it. You know, Matt, this bylaw was accurate, so that I can reference it and let you all know. Again, there was one guy that knew something was wrong. I spoke at a Board of Selectmen's meeting, a subsequent two-week meeting after that, people came in and said, don't worry, Mr. Gasco, there's nothing wrong.
Yeah, nothing wrong, right? It's a residential neighborhood, the only business on that side of the street is the quarry. And we outnumber you. That's all I have to say. Stop putting our square. You want our home back.
I need to apologize to the gentleman from the Board of Health. When I said, when I said in the beginning in response to Mr. Smith's question, that we don't, Kevin raised the point about how the Board of Health, and I may have given the impression that those complaints weren't followed up on or recorded, because that's not my intention. Joe, could you please explain how it falls into your department, what you, on behalf of the Board of Health, how you take care of those concerns?
Joe, Joe, why are you up there, Joe, did you ask that? That's why I was trying to signal to you. Could you, I mean, a lot of people express a concern about health. Could you just talk about the Board of Health's role and what's going on with the quarry and what future plans are, and what we can talk about and do with it?
My name is Joe Brea, I'm in the Health Department in the town. And going back two years ago with the Board of Health, that's through the road blocking when it came to PJ Keating wanting to move the asphalt plant up front. Since that time, just to answer maybe some of the questions that were concerns, we have been working constantly between the Board of Health and the Soil Board in order to, and with PJ Keating, come up with all those problems that we've been concerned about, the dust, the noise, the odor, how to regulate it, how to stay on top of it. We did, we did find out that there's an awful lot of regulatory authority that falls on both the E V A and the D E P. We also found out that the E P doesn't come in and do their, is understaffed, we're gonna say. Understaffed, is unable to do regular inspections of the Board to keep up with their approval from D E P. So we've taken all that into account. Over the past couple of years, we've gotten in touch with D E P, we've gotten in touch with EPA, we've gotten in touch with our own consultant. We've looked at every single solitary regulation that regulates PJ Keating and the quarry, from the asphalt side and from the quarry operation. Trying to put that together in regards to how monumental of a task that is, and how many regulations are involved, not to mention how much authority that we actually have in regards to doing that. Both from a Soil Board, because we have a bylaw, and from a Board of Health standpoint. And how to go about doing that in a way that's gonna be effective, because some of those regulations are specific to D E P. So over these past couple of years, we've been working again with many consultants, with state, with EPA, with our own particular people who develop the plan. There is a particular amount of plan that was discussed earlier that has been produced through the E P, through PJ Keating, with an oversight from us in order to make sure that we get what we need in there. There's a inspection protocol that we've come up with through our consultant that we are now going to take on roll-up. This way, we're there constantly, we're always gonna be around. That's the plan, that's the plan with Board of Health in implementing the, or hiring the COVID-19 patient. Again, have that person here all the time. These things have been consistent, and certainly on YouTube, the Soil Board meetings. These things have been consistent and certainly on YouTube, the Soil Board meetings. We've definitely been working towards this, we are at that moment now. We've actually put that job posting up and we're going to get some resume, get some map to move forward into being able to, again, be that person that's on the ground. I, as a health agent, have many, many things that I have to be involved in. It's very difficult, this is a very large company. It's very difficult to be there. If I'm there, it's going to take, this park day health agent is a 19-hour a week job. That's more than half the time that I work for town, just alone. We're going to spend being around PJ Keating at this point in time. So, we're trying to move forward to. We understand the concerns, but it's so much so that the Select Board, Soil Board, the Board of Health, the Fire Department at this point, are all joined together and moved to this moment. This is a different situation that we're in right now. This is a fire, you know, this is something that has to do with selecting in the Fire Department. But we're actually even taking this moment to make sure that where any concerns that come out of this are going to be incorporated into ultimately what we have now is our permit that encompasses every single solitary regulation that there is. And any conditions that might come onto this, onto the language license, and be able to oversee and regulate that on a much, much better basis than has been done maybe in the past. Again, very limited amount of time that we all have, we're all employee, employee life. You know, there's only so much time in a day, you know. PJ Keating works overnight, you know, we're not necessarily there at night. This is something that we want to do now with the health agent, we want to be able to be around at night. We want to document these things and start to get a real handle on it. PJ Keating has worked with us on this in order to facilitate these inspections that we want to do. And I think right at this moment, again, we are on the top of something that is going to be tremendously different than a Christian, it's a member of experience. Every guy's a really large company that's in a Christian. Hopefully, we'll get a better handle on it.
It's taken two, it's taken two years.
Two years.
What we got?
Two years.
Joe, questions, why, a couple of questions for the health agent, concern the front.
Joe, I have a question for you. So again, we're putting the cart before the horse. So the job posting has been posted for an assistant health agent for this job for PJ Keating.
The job is going to be, the salary is coming for PJ Keating.
No, not directly, not directly.
So I, and I understand. And I understand that PJ Keating is paying for part of this.
Not directly, no.
The salary, not directly.
No, it's still, there won't be, no.
Right.
It's coming out of their permit.
So the permit fee has been raised to $16,000. It's originally $5,000, it's raised to $16,000 to help compensate for this.
So my point of the matter is this. If this person is being hired exclusively to monitor what's going on, whether it's soil, air quality tests, size, geomographic tests, whatever it is, why isn't PJ Keating paying for that entire package? Why should a cushet have to partially pay for it?
That's going to be biased. Why was the money, you have to?
I have a little sub three together, we can't have an open discussion on that.
I would like to help respect, I want you guys to guess that.
No, fair question. So I, Joe, we have a little question that was asked before, and we've got people online, so we're going to get to them. But a town council asked PJ Keating to talk about the height of the tanks and how the tanks are filled, we didn't get a response to that. So could we, how tall are the tanks?
Just waiting for the line to clear.
Yeah, the line's never going to, we're not going to hear, it's going to be a long time. Let's go to you with that question, put out the floor, thank you, Mr. Brea.
My name is Danny Brewer, I work for PJ Keating. So, we do in fact have a permit to run an asphalt plant on South Main Street. What we're asking for is to take the tanks that we currently have in use and utilize those same tanks so that we have safe storage for our liquid asphalt. And one of those previous tanks allows us to do is store liquid so we can run at times, not have to have a truck in our facility. It also allows us to unload those trucks at a faster pace so they're on our site less time. Okay? Now for the truck traffic. The truck traffic volumes vary on the volumes of asphalt we produce over time. So, the truck traffic from the core is not impacted by moving these liquid storage tanks. The truck traffic for the asphalt that we produce is not impacted by moving these liquid storage tanks. It's the volume that we produce in a particular ton. However, we do recognize that in the plant up front, there is concern, more probably concern about noise from the truck traffic. So we agreed to hire a truck manager, or a nighttime manager if you will, to be a responsible party to address the noise in the truck traffic. As far as the height of the tanks, I particularly don't know off the top of my head at this time.
How about how they get filled, how's the material brought in that fills?
Liquid tank, portable liquid tank, ready to use on the road. They'll come into the facility, they hook up to Alraz, they'll pump off their truck, which is a tank.
Track the trailer truck problem?
Yes. Carry about 8,000 gallons each.
What's going to happen?
We don't know, we don't know how high the tanks are.
I don't know off the top of my head.
So Chief, you have a copy of the permit application, the cap that warrants in there? Do you have the exact number?
Say around 30 feet.
Or is it 30 feet?
On 30 feet tall.
There's the tanks that are going to be.
The brown, the storage tanks that are currently there?
Those are the.
Fuel tanks.
Okay, those are the asphalt.
Fuel tanks, they're less than 35 feet. But the storage facility for the asphalt, those are probably 70 feet in the end, correct?
I believe it is.
80 feet in the end, 90 feet in the end. You can't go too much higher, you have to leave the soft rings and travel over the other side.
We're limited to 90 feet, and I believe it's 82, 85.2, less than 35.
How tall, sir?
Yeah. To the top point of the storage silo is, is in duck work, it's way around 85 feet.
Mr. General, may I ask you a couple of questions?
Yeah, uh, town council, let me play, please.
Thank you, sir. When you originally answered my question, you said there was no appreciable difference, there was no truck traffic attributed to the tanks. I understand, you say that a tanker comes in with 8,000 gallons?
Right. It's 6 to 8, depending on the size of the truck and weight.
So it takes about three of these tanks, tankers to fill one of these tanks, is that correct?
That's correct.
And how quickly are the tanks empty?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
How often are these trucks coming in? So we're looking at about nine to 12 trucks coming in and fill all three tanks. Are they, are they empty daily when you're running?
Generally, we might empty one tank and have storage in another tank, and then continuously fill.
But you're continually filling, but what I'm driving at here, and I'm not trying to hide the ball, is how many tankers full of this liquid are coming in per day?
I don't know off the top of my head exactly.
Can you get to that information in the next meeting?
So, let's put it this way, for tanker, 8,000 gallons, you make 500 tons of asphalt we produce in a particular day, say 3,000 tons. We would, you could anticipate we had six loads coming in that day, or seven loads, something like that.
Per, per, per silo, or six to eight trucks?
Just, so it's based on the amount you produce in a day. And if a liquid tanker that's coming in to deliver liquid, get, say, 500 tons of asphalt, and on a day we did 3,000, so that would be, you know, five, five, six tankers in that particular day. Another 24-hour period, we need, or maybe four, it just depends on the volume.
And do these come in around the clock?
They generally come during the day to allow, you know, I think that's one of the reasons for storage. We do have some deliveries at night, if it's a special team type of thing. But generally, you try to utilize some of your storage from the daytime.
Okay.
It's very difficult to get high-volume deliveries around the clock.
And would these trucks come in? Are they ever staged, so do they come back out on the road?
No.
Are they, how long are they there to unload?
Again, I don't know exactly how long it takes to unload.
Hour, five hours, 12 hours?
Rob, you have a question?
You worry about it all. Sorry, half an hour, 40 minutes.
And is the tanker running at a whole time when it's doing that, so it's able to pump?
They'll pump off, there's a pump there and they pump off.
So up to an hour, you have a diesel engine running close to the neighborhood?
They have, they have a pump that's pumping off, yes.
Okay.
For every time the truck entering the site, discharge.
Alright, and there's at least six trucks a day when you guys are running?
When we're running.
Six to 12 trucks a day when you're running?
Again, it varies over the volume of the truck.
And the truck itself just idles?
The truck, the engine that's running drives the pump.
So, rather than idle, does the truck have to rev, to run the pump like a tractor or a PTO jack? You would have to increase the RPM, which will increase the noise.
You guys pump off yourselves, no? So the truck has a PTO on it, has a pump on it, and that pumps up, correct?
Right, but my question is, in order to run the PTO, you have to increase the RPM of the truck?
You'll run it up to the required running speed in order to do that.
So, Mr. Jim, my, the license that was issued to PJ Keating in 19, whatever you said, 1995. And the total capacity of tanks in gallons above ground is 88,000, is that still true? 88,000? That's what this permit was for in 1995?
Yeah, actually, they've got storage currently, including the liquid tanks, we have a little bit less than that.
So there's an underground tank, you have listed here as well, for 12,000 gallons? You still have an underground tank?
I don't believe you do.
We do?
Thank you, thank you. Let's go to the next lady on the line, you've been waiting patiently.
Just to be clear, my technical managers, there's no underground tanks currently in the station.
Thank you, identify yourself.
Cheryl Bright, sorry, 25 South Main Street. It's funny because I'm at 25 South Main Street. The lids stop at 30. If you think that PJ Keating does not affect my house, you're crazy. I have cracks along my entire foundation. My house shakes when the trucks go by. When they blast, I called that 2800 number that they used to call, you know, because it was like such a blast, that I wanted to make sure that they were blasting and that, you know, it wasn't something else. And when I called, the lady told me, "I have no idea what you're talking about. On the third pod, I don't know if they're blasting right now." Okay. You know, it's, I don't understand. And I think for that is actually legal in Massachusetts, just so you know. That's correct, because I tried to school bus an idea, I know. I decided from the CNN, how this whole process is going, because somehow my number got lost. So I didn't get a phone call, and I didn't get a letter. I'm kind of upset that I didn't get a letter, because I.
On this meeting? On this meeting, that was private.
Correct, because I'm at 25, it ended at 30. That's like.
How far away from the facility are you, man?
Uh, .4 miles.
I think our radius, when I, I specifically talked about, the head of council, the engineer, whatever, the gentleman said it was two years ago. And I said we have to do a much further outreach than the property bounds, the above list. What would people get, 15 people in a room? Would we know that the impact is that much further away from PJ Keating's borders?
I put out a thing and I asked some people in my neighborhood, I went around and I asked if they get a letter or if they get a phone call. And a lot of them didn't get a telephone. Okay, I won't mention names, but a lot of people in that neighborhood did not get a call.
We, just the only response, I mean, we, our selectmen wanted every resident in the town to cushion the worries.
And they should be included.
And we, we added, so the law says the male, the butters, butters of the butters, and we did that. 300 letters went out. But also the reverse 911, I, you know, we tried, I don't know why you didn't get it. I mean, I get the call.
Right, but I don't understand how my number got lost, maybe I had 28, 28 years.
We tried, we did the best we could, believe me.
But I did every other call to register my kid account. My son is 25, I don't think I had any more kid accounts that I have to register, okay? But I get every other call for the time, but I didn't get this call. It's just amazing that certain people in my neighborhood, around, from South Main Street and on South Main Street, after 3:00, didn't know it, yeah.
Yeah, the 5:00 AM call, the school's canceled, there's always a good one, right?
Yeah, I'm still, sorry, I'm already out the door to have a reading. But I'm trying to understand how this whole process is working. With them putting the tanks up front. How many trucks are going to be hustling? Because the trucks still get paid by the act. They get paid by the load. So they're going to be moving a lot quicker, and there's going to be a lot more trucks. You know, and I heard in one of the meetings, how we were going to get them to repay the road book. We're only going to go to the community center. And to me, if you want to look in the community center, all the way into behavior, it's all cracked, it's all bumpy. And that's what we complain about, because the trucks go over that, and they go like this, and all the houses do that. So I'm trying to understand where we're supposed to be going, I've been hearing this weird, you know? My house is so full of dust that I can't eat up with it. It's ridiculous. And people will get an ear condition, you know? I shouldn't have to do that. My taxes just went up almost $900 a year. But yeah, you don't know, my ass is giving me the whole. I don't, I don't get it. Because things from the back, what does it seem like in front? And how much more dust are we going to have? Because like everybody else says, that thing does nothing but adding the traffic. Oh, you're rapidly getting old issues. I mean, there are so many things. You know, there's probably a lot of people in here that can tell you some of the health issues that they already have with the asthma, you know, everything probably has health issues. Yeah, anything, anything, so. I just, I want to change. And it seems like there's no change. And I heard that we can't go through to 240 or to make, you know, town happy or whatever.
I mean, we're here to talk, we're here to listen, so that's.
Well, hopefully, some of you are listening, I know you are, thank you. But I think some people just, I don't know, I don't feel a good vibe that you're trying to help us. It's like, I understand that, you know, they probably hope the town will be happy. They're not helping, they're not, they're not paying my taxes.
Thank you.
I just want to bring up the point that.
Name and address one more time.
Yes, Liz Perry, 47 Main Lane. They put this beautiful trail across from PJ Keating. They're bombing out the entire town. They're sponsoring every sports that they can. The beautiful veteran memorial, it's beautiful. They think they can buy everything out. They have cute little pumpkins during Halloween, all along the front of PJ Keating, all the kids did. What about the kids that they're harming? I just don't think that, you know, they think by buying out the entire town is going to shut, shut us up. And it's not going to, it's not going to.
Dixon Doherty, 87 Page Street. So the goal of this is to move the tanks in order to blast more, is that correct?
Say that one more time.
The goal is to move the tanks in order to blast more, correct? So that means?
That's scary.
Yeah, so you're looking at more blasting, more traffic, more dust, more damage to property around the surrounding neighborhoods? And do you guys want to let that happen? That's clear.
We, 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 we did not say that.
Yeah, that's not a fair statement. I'm here to learn tonight.
But no.
And I understand the frustration of the neighborhood.
That's what the goal of controlling the tanks is, to increase production.
Six months, then you tell.
Increase blasting, increase point of view.
But I understand the frustration, trying to figure out.
Go on, Max, it's about money? Go on, Max, it's about money? And that's why they're doing this, that's why they want to move, but how much more blasting can that take?
Respond, Mr. Deroch, Mr. Deroch, please.
There's no blasting right now, but then a year from now, when you propose it again, you're going to go, oh, we're going to blast more, oh, we have, now we have a space.
So just for clarity, if I could, remove the asphalt plant off the reserves so we could blast in that area. It's not indicative of blasting more. We're asking to move liquid storage tanks to the front.
Because the liquid storage tanks are going to be waiting to blast. Because if you decide to blast, you're going to be leaking asphalt and stuff everywhere. That's the whole basic.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes or no?
Yes.
The liquid storage tanks, which are.
In the name of Hill Street, every shot's a break. What's it going to look like when you drive down the street? What is that going to do to property value? Have you seen these humongous tanks? The first thing people drive around my house are going to drive around the neighborhood and see what it looks like. The health problems are something they'll look into later, but visual is always the first thing we'll see. And how could there's no pictures of that? You have to take a look at the pictures. That's all, Mr. Deroch.
Thank you.
Christian Dusouz, forty-six, fourteen, uh, Mr. Cabral, I recently read a story about an issue in the northern part of town where there was a farm that was emitting organic fuels, is that correct?
Correct.
Farm, that was emitting organic fuels that the neighbors were complaining about. And reading the article, you stated that you felt that the residents of Kushton have a right to enjoy their property, is that correct? So if that stands for the northern town, why wouldn't that stand for the southern? Now, now, the chief brought up about.
You're not trying to paint us being against that statement, right? I mean, we agree.
I just want to put you on record.
I'm on record, I agree, absolutely agree.
And we're talking organic, we're not talking carcinogens. I'd rather smell rotten plants than fumes of asphalt twenty-four seven, non-sulf.
Another fault, I mean, they're right in their business ends in their property, and they need to contain their business within the town.
That's correct, so.
And the noise, and the light.
Is there a piece of that on my lungs?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, in addition to what the chief said earlier about a liaison for the health of the population, why don't we take the funds that are going to be allocated for that, and hire independent industrial hightechs? And let's see what the people are being exposed to. Why can't we do that? I don't think a liaison that's being paid by the board is going to have any effect.
No, we're not, we don't have, we, there's no one being paid for this.
Okay, so it's built into the program, I understand.
Probably the funds.
The funds are coming from PJ Keating, ultimately.
Into the town.
So yeah, why don't we take those funds and hire independent industrial hightechs that can do the air quality control and determine what the levels of contaminants are we getting that we are being exposed to?
So, it's killing me about this conversation, because we, Mr. Carrer, we're going to all talk about everything they can, but this, this conversation about who's paying for what, let me just read something about Tom by law for all you folks, and we'll see what PJ Keating has to say about it.
It says, "The Board of Selectmen shall establish such fees as shall find necessary for the administration of this bylaw, including to the issuance of the original permit, renewal permits, semi-annual inspections, and special inspections. Any fees received thereon shall be transmitted to the town treasurer, the town treasurer shall put all charges and bills properly authorized to the Board of Selectmen with the administration of this bylaw."
So technically, what I'm trying to say to you is, there's a bylaw that's in, that's active, that PJ Keating has to apply, abide by, and it says that we, the Board of Selectmen, can associate these fees with the Soil Board of the permit for them to cover the costs. So I don't understand, there's been some talk about adding fifteen grand to the Board Health's budget, we did fifteen grand to the Soil Board's budget, where we raised the permit fee to PJ Keating to cover the fifteen grand for the Soil Board permit.
It's already here, and then, let me just read something for the health issues, because I need to say this before the night's over as well. It says, "No permit for the removal shall be granted unless the Board of Selectmen finds that such removal, subject to the conditions imposed by the permit, will not be contrary to the best interest of the town, and no removal operation subsequently conducted on such permit shall continue if contrary to such interests. For the purpose of removal of the earth material shall be considered contrary to the best interest of the town, which one will be injurious or dangerous to the public health or safety, too, will produce noise, dust, other effects observable at lot lines, and the amount seriously objectionable or detrimental to the normal use of the adjacent property free, will result in transportation of materials on ways given access to the land in question which will cause traffic congestion or hazards for, which will result in transportation which will cause undue entry to the roadway surfaces five, which is, will result in the change of topography and coverage which will be disadvantage advantageous to the most appropriate use of the land which is the operations conducted, and last but not least, number six, which is the biggest one for all you folks. Number six says, "We will have a material adverse effect on the health or safety of persons living in a neighborhood or in the use of amenities of adjacent land." Now, 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 why aren't we taking this advantage of this to reel in the amount of work being done at a Keating facility, as opposed to allowing them to expand once again? Why aren't we taking this opportunity to reel in what's going on there, and start eliminating the effects on the neighborhood? Perhaps, perhaps, perhaps we should go back to town meeting, and then take the land, put it back into residential, take it back from industrial, put it back into industrial, into residential.
So just on, just on that, Mr. Carrer, just on that comment, Christian, you can't do that. Listen, once this was, this so-called face of bylaw was adopted, and they went to industrial, they are not considered grandfathered, just check with the council on that.
I wasn't grandfathered as residential. I'm going to be grandfathered as industrial, if not grandfathered as residential. That makes absolutely no sense, and I don't believe it.
Mr. Carrer, I'd be happy to respond to that, they have been grandfathered for a long, long time. They have been operating out of that particular spot for decades, decades, and they were, they were operating as pre-existing non-conform use. They then became conforming through an amendment to your bylaw, so if you amend your bylaw again, they have a use that's lawfully in existence prior to the change of bylaw, which would give them grandfathered protection.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, my name is Robert Wilson, I work with PJ Keating, oversee a lot of the boards that we have, I'm the VP of aggregates for PJ Keating. Interesting to hear a lot of discussion tonight. I've been with the company for approximately a year, and have been associated with Kushton. I've met a few people in this room, but I'm sure over the next few years, or however long I manage to last with this company, as people seem to point out, people keep changing, we do change. I have moved from companies, I've been in the business for forty years, I've moved all over the world. So, to that point, I just wanted to make sure that people understand that we are governed by MSHA. MSHA come on our site twice a year, doesn't matter which quarry it is in Massachusetts or the rest of the US, they will be on site at some point. We've had dust inspections, they carry out an inspection for the miners to ensure that we meet the criteria, and they put meters on each of our guys, personal dust monitors on the guys, so that monitoring is undertaken. We have no say over that, we don't know when they're going to turn up, but they turn up, and they do that, and I welcome it. I don't want to be discharging dust around the atmosphere, I want to have a safe site, and I want to have a good neighborhood. And that's something that PJ Keating is going to work with, and will continue to work for, and get, it will take a long time. I do believe, talking to people here a long time ago, that it was very, very bad, there was a lot of dust coming out. And I think you've talked to certain people, they will tell you the truth, that the roads have got better. And there are days when it does blow, I admit, and we have shut down, we all know that we've done that. We have probably told people that we have shut down, and we are working hard to improve our site. So I just wanted to make sure that goes on record, that we are one of the most heavily governed or administered sites, not just PJ Keating, the whole of our industry. There are a lot of governing bodies that oversee what we're doing from a health and safety point of view, from an environmental point of view, and we have Soil Boards, and we sit on other groups as well. So we treat this very seriously, I hear a lot of people laughing, but it's our livelihood as well. Without this operation, our livelihoods and our employees who live and work in Kushton cannot continue, they have to find another work. May I also point out, we pay taxes as well, and I know that sounds contentious, but it's true.
You're right, they hide taxes.
So, I just have my say, and everybody else seems to have their say, so that's what I'm going to do, thank you.
Regardless of the state, these gentlemen, just meaning, I have a political thought right here. I just happened to be coming home one day on November thirteenth, which is clearly dated and a lot, it's the biggest pool of dust that I have ever seen from that quarry, if you'd like to take a look at it?
Could you explain that? Right in front of my house, on Lower Key, you have, that is a pool of dust. And it was the greatest one that I've ever seen, so.
I appreciate this gentleman's experience, but I'm as well experienced, forty years in construction, I've been a heavy bricklayer all my life. And I'm going to tell you, I worked for some of the biggest companies out there, and not unlike PJ Keating, when the cats away, the mice are playing, okay, we're governed by ocean, we're well-trained, we know all the aspects, all the rules, just like PJ Keating does, but when there's no watchdog at all, everybody's playing a different game. So I'm not buying into his explanation whatsoever.
Step up. Hi. Hi, my name's Jennifer Holt, Tractor, I have thirty, Clifford Street. The seventy-two hour response that we spoke of, that's just unacceptable. Danger's already done, that we know. It's often difficult to have you guys out on site because of your time constraints, but I have two thousand pictures of my property, of windows, pools, decks, animals, tables, chairs, empty rooms packed with rock dust. I've shared them with Board of Health, I've shared them with a number of people on the committee, I will continue to share those pictures. We want accountability, we haven't done it in the past, we're not getting it now. Do you realize we're going to get it in the future?
We have to stand together.
I just can't imagine these trucks, these tractor trailers, or tankers, or whatever they may be, coming down Main Street to be filling these tanks, when there's school buses with children, when there's children waiting on the corner of the street for their school bus, when I'm waiting in traffic to get to my job, already. The danger that that's going to pose to our community, that's unacceptable. That's a two-lane residential road, it's not a freeway. They can't comply with the speed limit now, and we're going to add this additional traffic.
Okay, but they're up front of you, we can drive you down.
And let's put the streets we live in to, so that we create another hazard, all the school buses stop, the people, there's a forty, fifty foot line of traffic, and people are getting impatient, and they're trying to go around the streets we love, and then they're behind the school bus, and then they're turning. And so let's add these trucks to that already congested chaos, that sounds like a great idea. I'm a little confused with this, and I'd like clarification, on the sixty-fourty about this new tank, there's forty percent new tank, and there's sixty percent old tank for this fuel storage, is that, is that clear?
Not yet, the type, it's been explained, if Representative Keating would like to take the microphone so that you're addressing the public on this. The entire asphalt plant, as envisioned, sixty percent of the previous asphalt plant, not, would be moved forward, and forty percent of the overall would be new. Liquid asphalt tanks are coming from the old site forward.
Of those tanks, one of those tanks originally was property, what's the age of those tanks?
They're twelve years old, Mr. Carrer?
Two twenty thousand gallon tanks, nineteen ninety-eight, one thirty thousand gallon tank, two thousand fourteen.
And who's responsible for the inspection of those tanks?
PJ Keating, in the fire management.
So is there, is there not an underground tank installed in that property? Is there or is there not an underground tank?
There is not.
There is not?
Correct.
There's not an underground tank?
They're all fuel storage above ground.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Donna Shanken, Beechgrass Street. Mr. Gaspar, you just read the bylaw, and number six talks about the health of the people in the town. And I'm just wondering, what has been done to justify and or look at the detriment of what's transpired from this point to the residents? Has there been any, any testing in this? Have we looked at people in the neighborhoods and what their health issues were? I myself have called the ECA, and reported, because it's been a problem. But I'm not seeing the health board investigating, and looking at the neighborhoods. There are people that are sick all over the place. I have three people in my neighborhood within maybe four hundred feet around me that have died from lung cancer. So I'm kind of wondering, will we stand with that? I'm going to let you talk to that piece.
Peter Rash, A Williams Street, and very new to town. There's a number of things that have been brought up tonight, especially that item number six, which gives you the regulatory authority over this, am I correct on that?
That would, that's about the third removal permit, which would be the Soil Board permit, which the Soil Board puts together with the Board Health members, and the Board Health appointing to it, Keating officials, fire chiefs, and the town administrator, and then what they have. And then what they have to do for the ultimate approval is once they have this mitigation plan, I guess, what they're trying to do now is they'll follow that for the Board of Selectmen for their review. And then from there, we'll make sure that everybody, I've seen most of the stuff that the Soil Board, Mr. Korea, has been kind of sitting with me for a couple hours and giving me the information and it just really references most of our bylaws. So when it comes to part of me, I guess I'm going to have to look forward. We're going to have to make sure that everything, we're happy with it. And it says, what that says is at any point, if we feel, we can withdraw that license. So it's not a whole nother year of operation. I hope that everybody understands that, including PJ Keating. So if we have dust because we claim that we have monitors around, that's why the town is trying to do this, we're not trusting anybody else for this kind of work. And Mr. Korea's working on that with the Board of Health. So I have the utmost confidence in it now that they're moving forward with this plan. I'm going to streamline the plan and make sure that I'm satisfied with it. This is mostly about the tank movement. I think that moving that asphalt plan forward, I think we all have to keep in mind that those residents on South Main Street, even though it's a state highway, they are our residents of the town of Akushnet. And we have businesses along that strip that I believe by having that over and up front is even more detrimental to the people's health involved being here.
Dealing with the air quality. Now, does that fall under local, state, federal, or all three? Because the federal government has some pretty tough standards. I understand the federal government works in reverse most of the time because there's so much boondoggle. But if there are regulations in place and they're not being enforced, then whoever is in charge of enforcing these regulations needs to be at it. I'm a self-employed welder. I've done most of my welding in mine sites or open pit gravel plants. And yes, the Federals show up twice a year, but none of us are by one hundred percent by the regulations, simply because you can't fix stupid. That's where mostly the problem comes with accidents. People are not using their heads. I move back to when it was Warren brothers. I'm sure this operation has expanded multiple times since that period of time. And you, as a select board, have the authority to either approve or disapprove. And I'm not against Keating being there. I mean, it's been a quarry operation for probably my whole life. But as we find out how standards and causes of illnesses, and silica is a big thing in the mining industry, more so in coal mines because they're confined underground. But yet the monitors that they, that MSHA puts on are to monitor the amount of silica dust that's getting into people's lungs. That's what the trouble is. It's not the bigger grand scheme. But I just think you really need to make sure that any decisions are made are well-thought-out and in the best interest of everyone involved. Business is business. And one other thing I did here was an increased amount of trucks because of this liquid asphalt. These tanks are already in place, so there'll be no more tankers than actually are being delivered there right now. Am I correct in that?
No.
Okay.
Hello. Delia, thirty-sixth and South Street. My concern is with the oil sands, we have an issue. We have five of these guys keeping on there. We need a solution. We need you guys to make the right change. We need a change. We've got to take every consideration we can to fix this. This is an issue. We can't just let it go seventeen years ago on a site that I'm wearing. That's unacceptable. We can't have a problem and figure out what happened, what went wrong. We need to fix the problem now. This is what the issues are. It's going to be more traffic. We've got to look into the road. Guys, it needs to be widened. It will be a problem. We can't wait until it becomes a problem. People get caught accidents. They get hurt. People die. It's issues. You don't want to wait until it's a death or a problem to fix this. We want to make a change now. If it takes one year, two years to do the right thing, please do it. PJ Keating has a lot of experience. They have a consistent set of, can make these changes. We all know asphalt gives out a smell that we all smell it. In Bedford, the Haven, doesn't matter where you are. The wind is going to blow everywhere. Is it going to be a filter for that tank to prevent that from happening? I'll answer you that. No, it's not, because it would be a lot longer to do that. It's a lot of issues that need to address. And I don't think PJ Keating is going to do it. And who's going to hold the responsibility for that? Who's going to calculate, listen, it's been three months, why is nothing that's happening? We requested this months ago. Who's going to go after them, make sure they record through inspections every three months? Every six months? Every year? Who's going to keep records of that? You guys going to lost no one? By everybody?
That's what that part-time agent is supposed to do, sir.
Supposed to do so. Who's going to hold the responsibility and make sure that it's not there?
So if half this budget's coming out of Board of Health and half the salary's coming out of the Soil Board, the Board of Selectmen responsible for the Soil Board, the Board of Health's responsible for the other half. So you'd be going on the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health, which the Board of Health, it's not just a career. The Board of Health is a three-member board, just like the Board of Selectmen. So you have six individuals all accountable for that.
Okay. And they want to be all the accountable for this issue, right?
I'm sorry, sir. You're going to hold it accountable for what?
They want to be held accountable.
Accountable for all the noise, the dust, the noise, and all the other charades that we're in and in the houses outside of their boundaries, right? So we would hope so, right? We would hope that PJ Keating...
We don't hope. We want change.
No, I understand. I understand that.
Hope it's not, I mean, I think...
And if it comes down to the part-time individual saying, we have problems, Captain, we're going to have to come in and let them know that they're in violation of this Soil Board permit and they'll have so many days to remedy that problem. Mr. Korea, is that correct? How you plan on this situation? So if we give them twenty or thirty days for a remedy to it, if they do not remedy that problem that is concerned of the part-time agent, the Board of Selectmen have the right to pull this Soil Board permit, which in return would shut down earth removal altogether with, let alone asphalt plants.
Oh, well, thank you.
Dave Biggin, I've been thirty-three years a white guy. The first half of my lifetime, I was within that last home, I guess you'd call it. You know, we feel like we had Northway House shape right around lunchtime, I remember as a kid. I have a couple of questions. The first question I have is, they're a grandfather company, but are they grandfathers that work twenty-four seven, unlike all the other businesses in the house? Have they been doing, they grandfather to run their operation, Ron Walker?
My understanding is, you know, we could regulate hours of operation if we chose to.
Obviously, listen, division inside the bylaw law, hip references, and approving the issuance of a current, the board shall impose reasonable conditions beneath the Soil Board, especially designed to safeguard the neighborhood and the town, as it calls, finish leveling and grading of the, the placing of topsoil and planning grass necessary to control erosion and method of removal in one of them, letter F, is hours of operation that I have highlighted here.
Okay. So that's the ability to regulate hours of operation.
That brings me to my point. For years, that day, we've been talking about as a town, why don't they just build that road on the back of the facility to Two Forty? And we've been told, it's like an act of Congress. Fortunately, we have a state rep here, right? That should be a number one priority to leave here, because even if it was a one-way out, that means all the trucks that are loaded up are going on the back of the facility through the woods to get to Two Forty. Then it leaves a leaving a half a problem. If you do it both ways, you're taking all the truck traffic off of Main Street.
It's wetlands back there.
Yes, but there's also, there's also an access road, an old access road from Two Forty that they could build. They have the means and the money to do it.
That belongs to Commonwealth gas and it's surrounded by wetlands.
Well, I'll tell you what. Let me make my point, sir. My point is, I think their hours of operation should be ceased for nighttime operation until they, they get the act of Congress done and they build the road.
It doesn't remove it any further from our house, his house, his house, his house.
We're not going to be able to solve all the troubles at the time. We're not going to be like...
They say, well, some of them have been parked in my backyard. It's been in our backyard for thirty years we've lived there.
Correct.
Have a lot more.
Have got to run. And that will get them to shut this place down.
What, what conversation am I going to make?
Okay. My point is, you know, they have a grandmother right off the park, but if you don't have a right to make it worse and everybody can see this place is dead, then moving that asphalt plant to the front is going to make it worse. There's no question about it. So I urge the Select Board not to deny the request, but to make the request such that they can only move the tanks no closer than what they exist now from existing homes, which means they have to go further back. And they're going back there. They don't want to do it. They've asked that question, and like you said, this is all they...
You've got a good answer.
They don't want, they can still last and keep moving in the direction they want to and is still going to push it further back and push the road around with, you know, because they just don't want to do it. And I think that once you, if you would allow this to happen, then we're going to deal with the repercussions and we're going to be in coal now because they're not going to do anything for you. And I'll do anything now. Thank you.
My name is Brian Corriffy. I live on South St. Street, but I've been a lifelong resident of Akushnet. And I've always resided within a half mile from, I call it armorless though, because I've been there so long. I hear all the complaints from all the residents and yet they're all legitimate, but that's not why we're here today. We're here today about a tank being moved from the rear to the front. I'm hearing east to west. I'm, I'm, I'm hearing east to west. I feel rear to front, in the front, in the front of all the traffic, in the front of all the residents. And this is my concern. My main concern is this. This meeting's about the asphalt tanks being moved. Why are they being moved forward instead of back? And the question that you posed, Attorney, I don't recall your name.
Jeff.
Jeff? Was, you were concerned about the traffic from the trucks waiting? I'm a resident. I see the street every month of the year. April is big time, asphalt time, everyone's paving. You've got trucks coming from all over the region. I've found this, not just local truck drivers, there's a lot of influx of traffic from April to May. Sometimes it's so much traffic, those trucks are on the street, the state highway. What's that going to be like if that plant's moved forward when it's already in the back? But that's my concern. That's what this meeting's for, those tanks being moved, not what all the other rights that I agree with, but just that. And that's all I have to say.
Cheryl Walden, Dave, South Main. I just wanted to comment about the reported improvement with the dust. And I know, again, that's really not why we're here, but since it was said, I wanted to speak to it. For a very brief time after our initial meetings over at Council of Aging, I think that some of us did feel that there was a slight improvement in the area. We felt that people were trying to address the issue. I will say that that did go out the window. The filth on South Main Street, it, it, go there, please. Go there tomorrow and take a look. It is, somebody who made references as far as the silting outside their property, it is brown out there because there's so much silk on that road. It, I don't know what it is, that's all. I just wanted to point that out. And maybe for a hot second, it did improve. And I live, not even walk away. I look at the plant, I look at the lights at night, it's right there. So for a very brief time, it was some improvement. But right now, it's probably about the worst that I've seen it in, I don't know, fifteen years, it's bad for that.
My name is Nicole Goffin. I'm on Seventeen Beards Street. And I just want to say, listen, everybody's concerned with today. We just don't want the expenditure. No one here wants any station and we're calling the board to get it done.
Hey, how's it going? I hope we got a little bit of education behind me. I think that you're good, but I have a couple of questions, actually. That gentleman that mentioned about the access road, I definitely support that. I did break on Main Street, five ninety-five Main Street, or two, sorry. Four o'clock in the morning, rolling down Main Street, ready for some coveralls, okay? And that's soft soil there. So it'll hold house shake when those trucks come flying by at four o'clock in the morning. My bedroom is fifteen feet away from that street, okay? So I'd like to see if there's any way we can talk about doing this access road somehow or either that or put some kind of restriction on the trucks coming into town as part of this business. Also, I, I get, I support the White's line here, but we got to be careful because they pay a good tax base in this town. We take them out, you all get rucked as well, no? They don't pay any taxes?
They do.
They, they, they do, we're told, we have numbers in the back of the book, sir. I ran the numbers a few years ago. It's roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's it. So how much would that be approximately for each household? So he took the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, he distributed it over to thirty-five, thirty-seven hundred households that we have in the town. And we should, based on the debts, the exclusions we get, we're going to pay a hundred or fifty bucks a year.
Other...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm going to be in West Rockford in Washington, in the quarry. They were in a neighborhood where if I could fly up on the back of my truck and spit, I could hit it in the top, a neighborhood. So I just thought, how are you going to be aware, right? If I go to Atlantis and I pick up down there, they got a spray truck running all the time. And when they told us they were going to get a spray truck, I thought they were going to get one so they could spray it up like West Rockford. But yeah, that's where, the Angry Company on the K-5 Canal. You drive in there, come up to the scale house, they do the route from the scale house to where you get loaded. There's no lot of dust, there's no lot of smoke. They're all rock out of loose oil ore every day. And the trucks are cleaning, probably cleaning it away, like, like a three-day clean. But they don't have all this stuff that you've got up here. And the asphalt cleaner on the other side of the block, they got a system up there, I don't know what it's called, but you can go in there. I have allergies, so I get shot. Up there, I wouldn't be allowed to talk that way. Angry Company, some other place, they would have all these, all this... They would have all this, all this stuff. And did two to 300 trucks a day line up in that quarry. And they don't have the same dirt in front of the road that I have in my house. I got to map the way these trees rip it all of a sudden. The dust collected from Russo. So rainy today. So I'm walking down that, and I see gray wires from where the water's flowing from the apple leaves coming down across my property, and this is a swamp next door. And you're, this is, this is, it's dust. And I can down the sweeper, but I said, must have been a beating tonight, it was just happy, you know, there.
Relate to it.
It's going to be quick, John. I just want to know when you're going to make those decisions so that we know. People, you didn't vote like an answer.
Let me, let me make one, I'll make one concluding comment then. There have been issues at the quarry for years, and I, I think the game changed, I'm going to say two and a half years ago, when the quarry came forward and said, we're moving our asphalt plant from the back of our property to the front of our property. And at that year in the Council on Aging, two and a half years ago, um, I, I think attitudes in the town changed because I think the neighborhood came out and helped us become more aware of what the issues were and what the problems were. You know, I think that the residents of the town, you know, haven't been well-served by the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, or Soil Board, who just routinely remove that soil permit every year without investigating or asking questions, putting any teeth on that, on that. And, you know, it seems there have been complaints for years, and they've largely been ignored. You know, I, I will say that that's not the case anymore, that, that the Soil Board is working differently, that the Board of Health is working differently, and the Board of Selectmen is more aware. But, uh, it's complicated, and, and things don't happen quickly in government, is what I've come to understand. But, you know, I will say we're very sensitive to what's going on around PJ Keating's corner. I think PJ Keating's more aware. I'm disappointed with some of the comments that I'm hearing from residents tonight because I, you know, we've really been given the impression that PJ Keating's been more sensitive to the issues in their operation, and that, uh, they've tried to make conditions in the neighborhood surrounding the quarry better, and it doesn't feel like that's really the case. So, um, you know, I would say, you know, things are going to change. I think, you know, the town is here to, um, you know, protect the residents. That's why the Board of Selectmen exists, that's what the Soil Board does, that's what the Board of Health does. And, uh, the game's going to change, and PJ Keating's going to change to be better leaders because they haven't been for a long time.
And if this is wrong, but as a town, we put up, we did, town, um, we put up no J breaks. And then.
And the state took it down.
Then the state took it down?
The state took it down. The state high.
Right, the state doesn't wear it somewhere else.
I know, because the town, the town put signs up that said, no J breaks, and the state took it down.
I got in trouble for that.
And I, I try to go to wash, like, I try to.
I can't even get a five block.
In some, in some towns, and I see those signs everywhere, everywhere.
It's a state, it's a state.
Because it's, it's because it's a state highway, and I asked for certain signs to be put up on South Main Street, including certain speed limit signs, and the state came down and told me, I can't do that. All told us, we can't do that, so I was going to take down the parking signs. Done.
But they can still J break at 3:00 in the morning.
And we're supposed to get rid of the backup alarms that sits at the Council on Aging two and a half years, you say, and yet still the same beep, beep.
Really, still.
24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Still.
Excuse me, they shut it down Saturday night, but they re-stop 4 o'clock, so they.
Yeah, so that's more beginning to, to, I know a bit of office with some residents that own trucks, and it's a requirement to get an inspection sticker, it's a requirement when you're on state roads that when you're backing up, you have that noise. But they can easily get out of their truck and unplug the horn.
That's right.
And then back that truck up. But I, I don't know, I don't know how they're designing the facility now. If they were to move the tanks, and it seems to me like you can drive them in and drive them out, and it wouldn't be something that they're backing up anymore. Uh, I don't think the, the beeping noise from the truck is really everybody's problem, right? I know, I'm not saying, I don't mean that it's not, I think the major concerns, I would believe, is, yes, the noise is a nuisance, but isn't it also the gates slamming, trucks? The trucks being in there, the dusty odor, right? Those are the bigger issues that are affecting our everyday lives, other than a beeping noise. I would say, if you ask me, get rid of the dust, get rid of the other noises that the facility's creating, get rid of the frigging odor, I'd say, I'll look at the beep. I, why don't we, I, I, we're going to, we're going to wrap the meeting, and we'll, we'll stay around if people want to have conversations.
I know, I do.
We're going to stay around and have, we will be here if people want to talk. Why don't we at this point wrap the meeting, because I don't see anyone in the microphone. So why don't, this point we'll wrap, and we'll stay around and. Uh, I just find it very acceptable that I'm opening up at 2:00 with a truck back down. 3:00 with a truck back. 4:00 with a truck back.
That was supposed to be solved two and a half.
5:00.
Two and a half minutes, yeah.
And then have to get back at 6:00 and go to work all day long, after I've been awake several times throughout the night. I'll haul over to the quarry in the morning.
Two and a half years ago, that was not going to happen.
So, oh, it's not. It's not. I'm just repeating what I'm showing. That's an untrue statement, because right up until when they shut down, the beeping was still going on during the night. And I recall, and I've been complaining, and I probably had a million and a half home calls to Jeff, which is along with the quarry. And then now there's just a circle of disarray who haven't called us, so, thank you.
Well, it's not my intention, but. No, it's not your intention.
Oh, exactly, it's just, you know, I.
Thank, thank you all for coming, um, and, uh, we will keep, we will keep you informed.
Selecting the erosion, you come back here? So this is, so we're, we're here trying to discuss a reason ourselves because this is a public hearing, and we need to continue this without.
I'm told we have to continue this meeting to a date certain so we don't have to repost it again. So, uh, March 24, 2020, which is a Tuesday night, which seems to be a good day for you all, March 24, 2020. Um, we will, uh, we don't have to publish the meeting again, but if that changes, we will inform you. Yeah, we'll try. Six, six o'clock. It was a six o'clock, March 24, 2020, you want to continue this.